Educating, informing, serving. TV keeping government honest.
Adjustments to the agenda.
We would like to table 5H for the next meeting. And I do apologize, it's ACCD, not G.
Very good.
And the executive session for select board only is also tabled. That would be 6F.
Very good. Any other adjustments to the agenda will be entertained at this time? Focus online. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the acceptance of the minutes for October 27, 2021.
Will we accept the minutes of the meeting in November 10 as printed?
I'll second.
Motion for the acceptance of the minutes of the meeting for October 27, 2021 has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Minutes are adopted.
I abstain.
Move to the record. Toby Young was absent. She is an abstention. Thank you. Communication and public comments. We will begin, and I hope we can be heard. Michelle Baslin and Mike Muraki are representatives for the State House. Michelle and Mike, can you hear me?
Yes, would you like us to be, are we first on the agenda? I actually haven't seen the order yet.
Both are first on the agenda.
Okay. So I just have a quick process question. Should I include the idea of looking at a local Westminster mask mandate in my introduction? Or is that an agenda item for later?
You certainly can do that now if you wish to as well. You want to report what's going on at the State House first, then follow up with that.
Okay. Okay, great. All right. So hi, everybody. This is my first Westminster Select Board meeting as a represented official, as a elected official, rather. So it's good to be here with you. Yesterday, we actually went into the State House physically for the very first time. So I got to represent Westminster in a physical sense in our capital city, which was an honor, although strange circumstances. But I'll talk a little bit about that, actually, as a place to start. My whole first term, you know, I've been in office since January 6th, and it's been a very strange term. You know, we were entirely remote, except for yesterday because of COVID. And so the huge majority of my life, and I think most of us here in Vermont's life, has been really dictated and altered by what happens with COVID-19. As of yesterday, we had 404 deaths in our state. We have a rapidly rising rate of community spread in Vermont right now, much higher than we've had in the past. And the governor is not taking the same proactive steps that he was taking last year. So we met yesterday in person. The reason that the special session was called was that the governor indicated he would be willing to approve legislation that gave local communities the authority to pass mask mandates for their regions, and they could decide what that looked like. And so we did that. We passed it yesterday, and the Senate passed it, the House passed it, and that is going to be something that is possible for local communities. So I'll come back to that. I just wanted to touch on a couple of other things, but I will come back to that in terms of being a Westminster resident and what Westminster might want to do in accord with those ideas. So I did want to touch on two things that we're going to be doing going into the next session are we're looking at amending our constitution. There are two propositions, one of which is Proposition 2, and one is Proposition 5, which we're going to be voting on, which are going to determine whether or not we should change our Vermont constitution in two areas. Obviously, the one, Prop 2, is related to eliminating slavery and indentured servitude, which you might think isn't a big problem here in Vermont, but we actually never eliminated that. That's never been, it's never been stated in our constitution that that's something that we're not okay with. And so Proposition 2 will make clear that that is not something Vermonters stand for. Proposition 5 deals with women's reproductive health and giving women the right to make decisions about their healthcare in a way that regardless of what happens in the Supreme Court or in other places, Vermont women will have a choice to control their destiny. So there are a lot of people with strong feelings on that, and that's going to be, I think, one of the most important things that we look at in the legislature this spring. One other thing that we're looking at, and probably Mike Muraki will talk a little bit more about this, is looking at the issue of reapportionment. So every 10 years, we have a census, and then based on the population of the different communities, they will determine how many reps are able to serve how many regions and which regions are those. And this year, it's likely to be a rather complicated process. There was a statewide commission which looked at the issue and decided they would recommend everyone have single-seat districts. As you know, we don't have a single-seat district. We have three towns with two reps. And local committees will also meet and advise about that. The Westminster Committee met, and they said they do not want to change to single-seat districts. They recommended we keep the existing model and perhaps add Brookline as our partner city so that we have enough population to justify two people. I believe that Putney went the same, with the same recommendation. They said they wanted to increase the size of our region, but keep it a two-person district. And Mike can probably speak more to that because that'll be his committee that will be looking at that. So I think that's as much as I want to touch on for the general topics, but I would just like to bring back up, and I don't know where this will fit into the agenda later, or if there will be time to look at this now, or if it needs to be, you know, considered now and moved on in a couple of weeks. But, you know, as of yesterday, we passed this legislation in the State House that will enable local communities to pass policies to protect themselves in terms of community spread. There's been an awful lot of scientific research and evidence and studies in different communities. Masks do prevent community spread. They don't prevent it 100%. They present, they protect it at something like 53%. It's a reduced, reduced rate of 53% of community spread if you have people wearing masks consistently indoors in public spaces. And I personally feel like that is not too much to ask. There are lots and lots of places in the United States and around the world that are doing this. And actually, I forwarded a letter to those of you on the Select Board that was presented yesterday from Karen Horn with the League of Cities and Towns urging us to pass this legislation so that cities and towns could do this, this step to protect their communities. So as a, as a person who lives here in Westminster, I have to say that when I go into, I won't name any businesses, but when I go into the very few businesses we have here in Westminster, people are not wearing masks very much. I wear a mask, and occasionally I'll see some, one other person maybe in their 70s or 80s wearing a mask, but the staff are not wearing masks, the tourists are not wearing masks, and most of the locals are not wearing masks. And I think this is dangerous. I think we have vulnerable people in our community who, I don't want to get COVID. And I think the responsible thing would be for us to figure out an indoor mask mandate that we design that fits for our community, and I hope we can pass that. I know there are six or seven communities that are considering it right now, and I would love to see us be one of those. So that's my, sort of taking off my representative hat and putting on my I'm a citizen hat, but since I'm the same person, you get, you bet both perspectives come out from my chance to speak. So I'm happy to speak to that more later, and Mike can probably also expound on that as he's on the Government Operations Committee, which heard a lot of the direct testimony when we were looking at the bill that we passed yesterday. So that's all I have for now. I'll go ahead and pass it on to Mike, and we're happy to take some questions later if people have those.
Michelle, this is Kevin Hughes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to, based on your commentary, I just want to, for everyone present and on the record, acknowledge you're referring to the letter from Karen Horn, who is Director of Public Policy and Advocacy, to members of the Vermont Legislature, November 18, 2021, and the title was regarding mask requirement in public places legislation? That's what you were alluding to that you sent on to us?
Yes, and I believe it's called the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, and her role within that is public advocacy. Yes.
And that went to both Houses, correct? The Senate and the, and the House?
I would assume so. Mike says yes.
Okay, so we're submitting that as something for the public that you're bringing in as something to consider. Okay?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your commentary. Mike, you there?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Well, thanks so much. I hope everyone's doing well, and thanks so much for taking this time. I know this is a busy time. I'm not sure if you're finished with your budget or just getting started on it, but it's that time of year, I think. We are preparing to get going in Montpelier in January, and the 26 standing committees in the House and Senate are going to have a lot to do, but of course, right now, it all comes back down to COVID. We realize the health of Vermonters is paramount. It's our prime concern, and we're also aware that the health of Vermonters is tied to the health of our economy. And the economy's been doing well. Unemployment's back down to where it was before COVID hit, even though there's certainly lots of help-wanted signs out there. We're going to take a look at that, too, but that's number one on our list. We're going to be dealing with a lot of, some things to do with climate because, as we found out in July, again, what the climate scientists have been saying for quite a while now is coming true. We're having more storms, we're having more radical weather here and across the country, and I think Russ can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Westminster lost 13 roads in that July storm. I know the road crew did a, did a great job, but it's one of those things that we don't want to see that every year, so we're going to have to do what we can. On a very local level, though, one of the first things we will do, as we did last year, is figure out what's the best way to go ahead for town meeting next, next year. So Russ, we certainly want to hear from you and our town clerk, what your preference is and what we can do. I think we, we gave some options last year, but we want to make sure that we give you plenty of time to accommodate and be ready for, for town meeting next year. We are also going to be looking at a number of things, as Michelle said, reapportionment's happening, as it does every 10 years, and hopefully there won't be a lot different from what, from what Westminster's experiencing now. I have appreciated serving the town, and Michelle has been a great partner. She's doing some great work as a freshman, and I guess she's through her first year now, so we can't really call her a freshman. But it's been great to work with her, and as a team, I feel like, just like in anything in life, you get more done better as a team than individually, so looking forward to continuing with that. One of the things I want to stress is there may be things that come up in the next year, in the next few months, like the storm of July 29. We want to make sure you know, we are here for you. We've been, I've been trying to keep in touch with Russ, making sure that we keep pushing on our end for that FEMA money to come through. And I don't know if you've seen anything yet, Russ, but I think it's starting to inch its way towards the local level. I know in Putney, there were even more road damage, and so we're trying to make sure we push for that, and, and please know, whatever comes up, we're here for you. We're ready to work together as we have, as your partners and as your representatives to bring your voice to Montpelier. So I'm going to stop there. I know time, you have a busy agenda, but we're certainly open to any questions you might have for us tonight.
And we're going to have quite a few, or possibly, and I really appreciate, we all appreciate your representation and being here for us this evening. I, as the Chair, just directing, I would like to have a few questions of clarity before we begin. And regarding what is now known, and correct me if I am incorrect, as our representatives, S1, that is the name of the legislation regarding masking that the governor signed today, would that be correct?
Yep, that's right.
And Section 2, specifically in this authorization of the legislative body, if a board were to, a local board were to pass such legislation, that would only be in effect for approximately 45 days, and then it would have to be re-instituted with no longer than 30 days. Is that also correct?
That's right.
Yes, but it can continue to be extended every 30 days to no more than a maximum of April 30th. But it needs to be revisited every 30 days after the original 45.
That was my last, that was the next question. Thank you. The, this S1 will die on April 30, 2021, 22, correct?
It sunsets then, unless we do something, and hopefully it will. Hopefully, things are going to get better. We'll get through the winter, and we can really start to put COVID behind us. But as I said earlier, the health of Vermonters is our paramount concern, and given the numbers we have, and the fact that we especially don't want to create a situation where another variant can rise up, we want to make sure we do what we can. And of course, you know, the interesting thing here is the governor wanted local control to make the last decision on this here, and I'm going to editorialize a bit here. He didn't seem to feel that way about Act 46 in our school, but that's another topic. We won't go there right now.
And lastly, for an edification for everyone here, including myself, a little confusion. I'm not a legislator. I'm not an attorney, but I am a taxpayer and a proud one here in Westminster. The legislation lacks any specifics, specifics as to if such an act were, if such a decision was made by a local board, it doesn't, it didn't provide a remedy as to enforcement. Yeah, I'm correcting that, right? There was no mechanism for enforcement, whether it be civil or criminal or any other enforcement. Is that correct also?
That's right. The, the idea was to leave it up to the towns, whether they wanted to do anything, do nothing, whether they wanted this to be a civil or criminal penalty. And the other piece of it is, and this is the piece that I especially didn't like, is there, there weren't any resources for towns, and that's something we will remedy if need be come January, but the governor gave us very narrow parameters to work within, and he said anything outside that, he would veto. So we wanted to take what we could get and put something on the table.
Okay. Thank you. At this point, as is the tradition here in our great city, we are now going to open the floor. This is a passionate discussion for many folks. Please, just as always, we are citizens and we are neighbors, maintain decorum, as I know everyone will, and we will open the floor to questions, both to the representatives and general comment, to anyone who wishes to now recognize themselves. I would ask, please, just state your name fully so everybody can hear who's talking. So the floor is now open to everyone. Please.
Hi, Cassandra Pedego. My son goes to the Westminster Center School where there is a mask mandate. Despite the mandate, we get, I'd say, three emails or four emails a week about the eight to nine cases that have been detected in the weekly surveillance testing that they do on any child that would like to do it or parent sign off. I'm assuming those children are not going into the two, what, three, four businesses in Westminster and contracting the virus, although I guess that is a possibility, that their parents don't make them wear masks, they go into the local businesses, they're contracting COVID, and then they're going to surveillance testing. That is a possibility, although it seems unlikely. I have a child, school age, I hate bringing him into the store. It costs me like $30 every time, so I definitely don't bring him into Allen Brothers on a weekly basis. I feel that if these privately owned businesses wanted to mask mandate, they would be at this point. They all obliged when the governor made it a mandate. They put the signs up. For the most part, people wore masks. So I guess my question is, why we as a small town would feel it necessary to put up the signs again for a mandate that has no legal backing, no civil backing, there's literally no repercussions? And I know personally that none of those business owners are going to remove you from their establishment if you go in to buy your coffee and are not wearing the mask. So I guess my question is, why we would enforce something that has no, no backing to it?
Mike or Michelle? Thank you so much.
I can take a quick stab at it, and maybe Mike wants to add. I mean, the, the statistic that I've heard recently is that masks do not prevent all spread, but they reduce spread by 53%. So if you have kids in schools that are there all day long and they're next to somebody who's got COVID, so half of them are going to get it, but half of them aren't necessarily going to get it. And so when you go in, the thing with some of the variants like Delta is if you sneeze or you cough and you breathe in the contaminants from that, you are extraordinarily likely to get it. So if you take your child or as an adult, you go into Allen Brothers or you go into another business and nobody's wearing masks, one exfoliation of air particles can make somebody else get sick. So why do we want this? We want this to slow the spread. We want this to slow the spread. Many people get COVID and they get a very mild case. I caught breakthrough COVID. I had a very mild case. I recovered quickly. I was vaccinated. I recovered. I was, I had almost no symptoms. But I have a friend who caught COVID a year ago during early in the pandemic, and she died. You know, she had diabetes and she died, and that still happens. You know, we've lost Vermonters. We, the people that are vulnerable are the ones that I'm particularly concerned about it. So somebody goes into Allen Brothers and somebody coughs, and somebody catches it. If they were wearing a mask and they might have been in that 53% to be protected, I would like to protect that person. It doesn't feel like it's so much of an impediment. And I agree with you that I don't think we should have punishments. I don't think this is about being punitive. I don't think we want to make this into a big, a big criminal thing. But if, if, just like when the governor had the mask mandates before and there were signs up, the huge majority of people complied with that. So that is reducing the spread and increasing public health, and that's what I want for us. I want, for what I want for us is to increase public health. I want my parents to be able to go to Allen Brothers and get the newspaper and not think that there's an increased chance that somebody who just came up from New York or Connecticut or God knows where and might have COVID and not be aware of it, might spread it to them. Mike, I don't know if you want to add anything?
I just want to say real quick, I'm a little offended that you just threw Allen Brothers out there three times.
I just said it because you mentioned it, that's all. I only mentioned that because you mentioned it.
My point is, but, so I was just saying I could bring my child into any store. Chances are, that's not where he's catching COVID. He is likely catching it from a direct contact in school, where they're already wearing masks, you're correct. But my point is, is it's a private business, so it seems unnecessary for you to publicly shame them at this meeting.
Okay. My apologies about naming Allen Brothers. There aren't a lot of businesses in Westminster. I would, I would appreciate it, and I would feel better as a Westminster resident. Any business I walk into in Westminster, I would rather have other people have masks, and I would like to, I wear a mask, and I would like other people to wear a mask. To me, it feels like an issue of public safety. The, the issue of schools actually is separate. Schools are making their own policy. So this is really about people being in public spaces. When people go to a grocery store, when people go to a gas station, you know, when people go to a car mechanic, if you're in an indoor closed space for any amount of time, you know, we're probably talking about like five to 10 minutes, the evidence is that spread will be contained if, if people are wearing masks, and that is why I think it's a good idea.
I just want to say real quick, medically speaking, it's a 15-minute exposure time. So in a store such as Allen Brothers, the Westminster Market, Harlow's Farm, I know I'm missing Judd's, the chances you're going to spend more than 15 minutes in that establishment is very unlikely.
That actually isn't true. If there's a cough, if there's a cough or a sneeze, you don't need 15 minutes. You need about one minute. It depends on air particles, so 15 minutes is not an accurate number.
Any further comment?
That's what the CDC has been recommending, is you don't have to report any public exposure of more or less than 15 minutes. So I would think that if Allen Brothers is having, or Westminster, or any other business is having a lot of calls from the CDC about tracking back to customers who may have passed it in their business, they'd probably be enforcing those rules.
Okay. Thank you so much. Mike, you want? Go ahead, Mike.
I just wanted to highlight, Vermont had great numbers last year, and one of the reasons was a lot of people cooperated. We masked. When the time came, we got vaccinations. There was just some good news this, today about how Vermont really is leading with vaccinations. We hope to get this under control. One of the things we're hoping to do is just raise, raise the awareness again that we're not sure why Vermont's numbers have grown exponentially in the last month, but they are. And we want to try and get it under control, and one of the things that we think can help is masks. And again, this is, this is something the governor could have done with his executive actions, but he felt the best way to do it was to let local elected boards take that on, so that, that's why the decision is there for you.
Yeah. Please, Molly.
Molly Bannack. We still live in America. Mask should be your choice. I feel really bad that we live in a cute town. We have three or four businesses, and we are going to put a lot of pressure on them to mandate a mask mandate. There's no way they can, but is it going to turn away some people? I mean, these people work really hard to make a living, and mask is your choice. If you are concerned, wear a mask.
Thank you, Molly. Yes, sir. Please identify.
Brandon Pedego, Westminster resident. Now that my daughter showed me up. I'll step in.
Did a fine job.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I work hard. I'm president. I'm completely against mask mandates. People who want to wear them should, people who don't want to wear them shouldn't, and I hope the board considers that concern.
Thank you, sir.
I'm also Rebecca Pedego, put in there that most establishments will deliver your goods straight to your car, contactless purchasing. Even here in our little town of Westminster, most places will do that. So I feel if you are of high risk and that concerned, those, you know, these things have been given to you by these establishments to make it more comfortable for you, as opposed to making us all change our behavior and wear masks to make you feel more comfortable with your health concerns.
Yes, please, step forward, sir.
John Parker. We have vaccines, we have boosters, they're all available, and if you're really concerned, you could get an N95 mask. That's what actually going to do something other than a rag draped over your face. Wear an N95, protect yourself. Don't worry about what the rest of us do. You could buy them at the hardware store that Holly works at. I see them at Home Depot the other night. There's not a shortage of N95s anymore. That'll actually protect you from something. That's what the, you wear in the medical field, so buy your mask if you're concerned or you're high-risk, and the rest of us will do it tomorrow.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Yes?
Chuck Lawrence, Westminster. I was just curious, do we know how many people right now in the town of Westminster have COVID, out of our 3,000? I'm just curious, what the percentage of people right now are sick?
Russ or Sue?
Well, I, I just got this from, yeah, sorry, Susan Harlow from the Vermont Department of Health website. Said 83.
83 in Westminster?
Yeah.
In the last two weeks.
In the last two weeks, right.
Any other members of the public wanting to address this particular point? Yes, please, step forward, sir.
Paul Vanek, Westminster.
Hi, Paul.
As well with the other colleagues that I'm in line with, wearing a mask is still a medical choice as well. So why shouldn't it be a choice? I don't want to wear one, or I do want to wear one. It should be a choice, and I hope that the Select Board and all consider it that way. And, you know, enforcement of any kind is going to cripple business, no matter what you believe. So why put a store or a business or a place where they feel awkward to have a customer come into their establishment when they pick up that cup of coffee and somebody's going to come up behind them and say, "Put it down and leave"? Or, God forbid, for any monetary fires, would be unthinkable, unimaginable, and, and I certainly wouldn't support them anyway. There's enough hardship out here now. No one needs any criminal punishment, so high concern for me. And, and I certainly wouldn't support them anyway. There's enough hardship out here now. No one needs any criminal punishment. So high concern for me. I do have one comment for Representative Bozlin. It's very difficult to listen to you when your conversation is filled with "I". You're a representative. I'd like to hear something formulated a little closer to your representation of people in this town, not just what you want. You clearly, you clearly stated that you were upfront about it, that we deal with you as a person and a representative, so we get both. But if your, your conversations would be more digestible if they didn't include "I" throughout every sentence. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Can I just say?
Please.
Someone on here named Tony Elliott has a Henry side. I don't know if he wants to say something.
Yes, Tony Elliott, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I just want to remark that history has shown that the more people that join together to do something in common in this regard, make the whole process more effective. And I, I do believe that everyone wearing masks in public spaces would be beneficial to stop the spread of COVID. What I think is most concerning is that as people become infected and get sick, new variants will occur and we won't get this process stopped. So from a scientific point of view, I think it's best that we do have a mask mandate and, and I wish it were not a political thing, but more of a logical thing.
Thank you very much for your participation and your partnership in the town. Is there anyone else online with their hand up for this particular part of the discussion?
Doesn't appear to be none.
Before I move over, please, we move, we move over generally. First of all, we want to apologize for so many folks having to stand. We're really sorry for that. I did want to direct a curiosity I had, given the fact that the governor just signed this this morning as a citizen and a board member. So there's a lot of information here. I want to direct it to both our representatives. Mike and Michelle, are you still there?
Still here. Thanks.
Yes.
I'm referring to a memorandum that was submitted to the House Legislative Committee on Government Operations. And to be conclusive and apolitical completely, I also want to let you know that the board will have information from Jay Johnson, Karen Horn, Logan Grin, Tucker Anderson, obviously. Tucker Anderson put together the S1 final descriptive. But this individual, her name is Anne N. Sosnan. I hope I have that correct. She is awesome. Thank you. She is a policy fellow of the Nelson A. Rockefeller Center at Dartmouth College. And she submitted on November 21st, 2021, a temporary municipal mask mandate act was the subject. And you guys are familiar with this particular memorandum?
I, I am. I, I heard her speak yesterday.
Thank you. So for everyone here who hasn't seen it, something did come, I read it. And something jumped out at me on number three of the memorandum where she says, why the temporary municipal mask mandate act will not work. Number one, she said that, or number two, excuse me, I am concerned that a local control approach will have suboptimal public health impact, unnecessarily burden municipal leaders with making and implementing public health decisions and exacerbate health, educational and economic disparities. She went on to say further that a town by town approach falls short of the aggressive statewide strategies needed to address Vermont's current public health crisis. Individuals, households and communities live, learn and work and recreate across multiple communities, counties and even state lines. I know I'm paraphrasing a portion of that. She had a lengthy memo. I was hoping just as a board member, other board members are going to want to speak. If you could address that, Mike, as to exactly, am I reading that correctly? That this person spends her time in the field and although she is a critical fighter of this disease, she is not a big proponent of local mandates. Is that correct?
What, what she advised us was that her preference would be if the governor put a statewide mandate in across the board, that piecemeal, whether one town does this or not, would not have the effects you wanted as much as a statewide mandate.
Okay. Michelle, did you want to comment on that?
I would agree. My, my understanding is the same. She's an advocate of masking. She thinks that more masking will provide more prevention. And so if you have not enough towns that, that pass mask mandates, you won't have enough people covering, covering themselves and then potentially infect, infecting others. So she's not opposed to masking. She is an advocate of greater masking than, than is possible through this town by town model.
But she is saying that a town by, town by town approach is not going to be effective.
That's right.
Okay. Members of the board.
Well, I guess I can say something since my name was brought up so much, but because in this town, there isn't a lot of choices, unfortunately. But also being involved with the other businesses, all the businesses that I deal with, which is most of the main ones, all came up with a policy of basically you either get vaccinated or you wear a mask. And it was to not protect the public because where I work, we don't have a lot of public. It was to protect each other. We, our number one concern, even at Allen Brothers, was first, your employees, because they're there all day being exposed. And we pushed hard that, hey, listen, it's really difficult to wear a mask all day when you're working. It's bad enough that some people here don't even want to wear it when you walk in the store, let alone that poor girl that's behind the counter having to wear that thing all day long. If she went out or he went out and got a shot, took care of themselves so that they can be working next to somebody else, that was always our main concern, was to protect you in the building that you're working in all day. Unfortunately, Allen Brothers or Fathers or a few other names where you actually get people walking in. Yeah, it's hard to protect yourself from the people coming in, but if those people are vaccinated and then they decide to wear a mask, they're protected as much as they'll ever be protected and they should have that choice. But we, we always, always pushed hard and we're following state rules all the time. But number one was, we're in this environment and all I could see was the upper white class skipped home, worked in the office. I'm not picking on these two representatives. It's easy to say or not wear a mask when you sit home and you work on a computer all day and you talk on the phone. You don't have to work in a room like I did where you got people coming in all the time and you are worried about it. Okay? So there's two different scenarios. So it's easy to throw stones and say, oh, you got to wear a mask. When you're not working in an environment like that, you're not the person behind the counter working on people and serving people or being in a hospital. So I just, I have a problem with it because I think number one is, I, I went and got shots. I think this is real important that I want to protect the lady that sits next to me in my office and the people. I had to work with Chuck today. I was concerned that Chuck would be too close to me. But he went out and all of them got shots and they're all protecting themselves. So best thing you do is get educated on it and protect yourself. But my main concern is we passed a rule and we're all concerned about people walking into this building. Number one is what did you do to the people in that building all day long? Did you mandate a rule that really made them, because we had a hard enough time finding help that would ever want it? That's why you can't find, nobody wants to work in a restaurant? Nobody wants to come in and wear a mask all day. Okay? I don't have a problem putting a mask on, walking in and walking out a few minutes. I don't, that's my privilege one way or the other. But if you're telling me I got to wear a mask behind my desk all day long, you're nuts. I'm going home, working at my house.
So, so Craig, your point's well taken and I appreciate that. I'm not sure if you're aware that legislature is just part time. We do work other jobs. So I, I am out there every day with people in what I call my paying job. Because the legislature only pays us five months of the year and that $13,000 a year doesn't put food on my table. So we all work other jobs. So we are out there and, and I know it's, it's, wearing a mask all day is a, is a tough thing. So I, I, I get it. We're, we're trying to figure out what's the best way to keep people healthy here and your, your point's well taken though. There, there's a lot of people that the piece about trying to get people to come to work too. The help wanted signs are up all over the place and we're trying to figure out how to help with that too.
Toby?
Well.
Toby, yeah.
Frankly, I've had, there, every time I walk into a store, it's changed. You know, that last week it was, you needed to wear your mask and this week you didn't have to wear your mask. And so it's very, I understand. I feel that I've done all the vaccinating I can do and I will wear a mask if I go into a store where they want me to wear the mask, but generally I don't wear it if I don't have to. So that's, I don't, you know, it's puzzling and I, you know, I, it's, I'm a little concerned about the 45 days and then you look again and then you go 30 days and 30 days and it ends in April. I'm not sure that that collection of numbers and things are important. And I think they may just, you know, break the way it's going to work. So I'm not, I'm not a fan of it. I'll follow it. If I have to go into a store, I won't make a fuss about it. But I don't think it's necessary. I don't think it's going to work.
Thank you. Sue Harlow.
I would be more in favor of a mask mandate if we were a larger town, but we have so few businesses where people, numbers of people gather. I don't think it makes much sense. And the institute has a mask requirement. I believe the church doesn't even meet the school. Kids are masked. So I don't think we're a large enough town with enough businesses or of people getting together to require a mandate. And I also wonder, has anybody actually gone into any of these businesses you're concerned about and asked to require their employees wear masks? That's where I would start before I mandated it.
Wise as always. Jason?
I'll be short and sweet. I'm going to say no. It's a, should be a personal choice. That's my thing.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Cole Streeter. COVID is not going away. We aren't going to mask it away. We aren't going to vaccinate it away, as you can see. State of Vermont has a very high vaccination rate and we're still spreading COVID around. So we're going to have to learn to live with it and masks, like I say, and vaccinations are not going to get rid of it. It's going to be here. We got to live with it, figure it out.
Anyone else from the general public? Yes, sir.
Chuck Lawrence. I just feel that we live so close to the border. It's not like we're isolated. If people feel uncomfortable shopping here, they're going to go somewhere else. So we've already got businesses that are suffering. My concern is, are we, are we going to, I don't know, put them in more of an, more of an economic peril by mandating, you know, a mask mandate and forcing people to shop in New Hampshire or wherever else where they don't have to wear a mask? Because that's what will happen. We'll just go somewhere else. So what have you really solved? Nothing.
On that point.
Please.
Putney and Braderboro has wonderful mask mandates. Everybody follows them. So if you were really concerned about it, you can definitely just like stop in Putney.
Absolutely. Again, thank, we want to take this opportunity too, to thank all of our first responders, our highway department, everyone who does everything for us through this entire thing. This has been tough on all of us, your families, your extended families. And our town has done exceptionally well. We've really come through. Our, our town board, our town manager and the town government, everyone who works there worked really hard through this process. My concern, Mike and Michelle, is this town was here 300 years before I got here. It's going to be 300 years after I got here with great people. I'm not, I don't know where we get the mandated authority to start making these type of mandates and where would it stop from there? Not to mention the burden. While I appreciate deeply as a citizen and as a taxpayer, the fact that we do have arrives, I can just rely on what Cole Streeter, who's out there every day with all of our fine folks that are, that are, that are volunteering. He sees it every day and at the end of the day, it's, it's, it's just not something that is our role. We're here to be collegial, to handle the town's business, to listen to our citizens, and I'm so happy that they're all here tonight. I don't think it's necessary either, considering how strong and how well our town has pulled together. And I think when numbers go up, and I appreciate what you're trying to do. Numbers have gone up. There's no question about that. And to bring it to light is something that we always have to remember. But in the end, we all need to pull together, move forward and move from pandemic to endemic and then forward. So for me too, I'm going to find it very difficult to find out how a board like ours is somehow empowered to put in such a restriction. That is my humble two cents as a fellow taxpayer and citizen. Are there any comments on this? Any further comments from the board? Or from the public? Or from our wonderful representatives that have joined here tonight and presented this before us?
I just have one quick comment and it is a personal one from my experience. I mean, in terms of masks, the reason that, that masks are a good idea is it because it's an extra layer. People are saying that they're vaccinated and that's protecting them and that's true. It's going to provide a fair amount of protection, but it's not guaranteed. So adding that extra layer, in my, in my experience is wise, partly be, I know this because my son came to visit for the first time after a year and a half. I hadn't seen him. He lives in Florida. He came up to visit. He almost certainly caught COVID on the plane. He works at home. He was on the plane for three and a half hours. He got to me. Four days later, he got a cold and four days later, my husband was positive and then I was positive. We didn't wear masks around each other. We were all vaccinated. It was in the summer and we were all glowy and happy that we were going to be protected and we could finally see each other and it still can spread. So I guess I just would like to say, as a person who is concerned about public health, who is concerned about the health of the people in our town and in our state, please choose to wear a mask when you're around other people as much as you can because you will be protecting other people. Even if you don't, aren't concerned about your own health, you don't know if you could have it. I didn't know that I had COVID until I tested positive after my husband had tested positive. You don't have symptoms usually until several days after you already are contagious. So let's just be careful. Let's take care of each other. I mean, I think part of my job is to help the community take care of each other. And the, the thing we passed yesterday was let communities decide. It sounds pretty clear. Westminster doesn't want this. That's okay. But I just hope that we will take care of each other and keep in mind that there are vulnerable people and if you wear a mask when you're around them, you will be protecting them. So please, let's take care of each other. That's what I want for our town.
Thank you. One, another comment. Yes, sir.
Michelle, I just flew in a plane. Was there someone wearing a mask on the plane?
He was wearing a mask on the plane and as I said earlier, it's a 53% reduction of spread when you're wearing a mask. He was wearing a mask the entire time.
Thank you. Yes, another one, please.
June Streeter. We pretty much just covered 6B. Are we going to bring that up again?
Good question.
No, we are, we, we can actually, thank you, Craig. We actually could move to, to 6B and conclude that now. And we would be very thankful to you for pointing that out, June. If there are no, are there any further comments, considerations, concerns for this issue? From online? None? Seeing none. We wish everyone a happy, healthy and safe Thanksgiving with your families. Thank you for being here this evening and for all your input and concern and commentary. Thank you so much. Thank you to our two representatives as well for joining us this evening.
And thank you for your time and, and all your efforts and please know again, something comes up, we're, we're here. We want to hear from you. We want to do what we can. I'll, I'll be in touch with Russ. I don't know if Russ has seen any of that FEMA money yet.
Nope, not yet.
Yep. So. Were they in touch with you recently, Russ? Were they in touch with you recently, Russ?
Yeah, so I'm meeting with them weekly now.
Okay, yeah. So I, I think, and I'm not sure, I think you were up near a million dollars.
We are.
So we're going to, just like, you know, with the last storm, when you needed the money for that bridge, I think it was 400,000. We made sure we got that money for you. We're going to make sure this, nothing, we, we don't want to let anything stand in the way of that. We're going to make sure that, that Westminster gets made whole and that, that's money that can come from FEMA. So please, please keep me updated though. It feels like things, you know, Michelle and I are ready to push on that if, if things, feels like things are going off track.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes communication and public comment on four and thank you for June pointing out 6B. Yes. We'll now move on to Mark Anderson. Thank you all. And we are very lucky to have Mark Anderson, our Wyndham County Sheriff, this evening. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. So I know it's budget time of the year. I'm a little disappointed. Nobody wanted to hear, I shouldn't say nobody, there's a few people still wondering what I said. This is our usual visit though. I'm here because this year we do have a significant increase in our rate, which I know is going to raise issue. So I wanted to be able to explain how we built the rate, why there's an increase. Some of it is not a surprise. I mean, everybody's looking around. We need help. Everything's gone up. Gas is more, this is more, that's more. So I wanted to have an opportunity to, to sit down with the board and the public and basically explain the, the rock and the hard place we're up against. So as you know, we are a fee for service for our law enforcement services that we provide to town Westminster. We are also providing animal control, which I'm going to separate that conversation out because we're trying a different structure. So I'm just going to speak for the law enforcement component right now. And so with that fee, what that's responsible for paying is the hourly rate of the employee, their health insurance, their dental insurance, their life insurance, their police liability, false arrest insurance, the vehicle insurance, the vehicle, the gas, the oil change, et cetera, et cetera. Up, each year in November, we issue a rate letter per our contract, which is the document that you have received. And this year it went up about $8, $8 to $10 depending on whether it's the full service position versus the not full service position. In July of this year, so about four months ago, five months ago, we received notice from the Department of Financial Regulation and the Treasurer's Office that our retirement cost, employer retirement cost has increased and it increased significantly. It's currently 25% of the employee's wage. Now, for reference, when I joined the Sheriff's Department in 2007, the, the cost was about 12% of the employee's wage. So it has more than doubled. The reason for this is complicated. I can't say I fully understand all of it, but it's also been in the guise of the legislature over the last, last year. We also know that it's going to be taken into our scope this year. We are a member of the Vermont State Employees Retirement System. We joined in the early 2000s and not sure the exact year, but that said, the law that says that we're allowed to join also says we're not allowed to leave once we do. So I've been saying, I want out and they've been saying tough luck. The, I've been working with our legislative delegation about this because ultimately what this comes down to is it's about $5 an hour per, for my employee that I have to tack on just on the top. And so that's where roughly five of those dollars go to. The, the remaining dollars, it's, I mean, the reality that last year we had no increase, we level funded, just eyeing that there's a lot of federal money that was coming out. And we said, we can figure this out, similar to how we've done in the past. But the, where we were anticipating having some relief was with the ARPA funds that were also issued for the county or counties, which was $120 million, which all the county said, we have no idea how we could even use that much money. So we're in agreement that the town should see money, but where we disagreed with the administration is that we did need some money. And so when cities like Burlington announced that they're going to be offering $10,000 to $15,000 sign-on bonuses using ARPA funds, we were sitting here on an uneven playing field saying, how do we retain our officers? Now surely Burlington's far more, but across the state, the law enforcement is severely understaffed. We can look at Brattonboro who just cut an entire shift so that they could maintain their, their service levels without suspension overtime. New Hampshire has, has many reductions in staffing and I'm fortunate that I actually have a fairly robust staff right now. While I went down about four positions back in July, we're building that back up. So we are optimistic that we are going to be back to full staff here shortly, but we're waiting on some process with the state. But the, the issue with the ARPA funds is that as agencies start to issue these sign-on bonuses and retention bonuses, we start to see it spread statewide. So we're working to be competitive to maintain our staff so that they're not pushed away because right now that is the viable recruiting market for law enforcement. Statewide, there is a reduction, I can't quote the numbers off the top of my head, I apologize, but there's a reduction in staffing, something in like the 200s for law enforcement with an expected return or hiring and training, people returning to the, the field roughly in the 60s. So we are losing law enforcement officers way quicker than we're gaining. And that's, that's a statewide problem. Regionally, I think that we are a little bit safer. I think that some of those numbers are, are absorbed in Jettin County where there's a broader population, more law enforcement officers, more agencies. But these are some of the issues that we're up against. That's the short version. Now what am I doing, what I'm working on doing is trying to find, I don't know, four different ways that we can find relief so that the rates that we quoted in our rate letter, which I'm calling our worst case scenario, is not what's real life when we come to contract negotiations in the future. However, I couldn't give you the best case scenario because you have to plan a budget and if I give you the best case and it doesn't shape up, then we have a problem if you have a level of service that doesn't fit your budget. I have been working with both our local delegation, House and Senate delegation to try and find solutions. One is what I call the off ramp from the retirement system. So that would be relief number one and that would bring a significant reduction to the hourly rate. I've been working with members of the General Assembly statewide to see if we can find funds from either this, really from the state money at this point, to be able to provide some sort of infusion. We're also working with other public safety partners to see if there's some sort of way that we can find a cohesion to leverage those benefits. So those are three ways. I think there's a fourth way, but I just can't remember it at this hour. I've been going for about 14 hours, so I'm a little tired.
Good question.
Yes. Please.
It's very interesting hearing the problems you're having, but you have not mentioned at all how your services to the towns are going.
They are down right now because of the four people that I lost in July. One of them was servicing the town. Actually, I guess technically it was June, but one was servicing the town and the second one was qualified to provide service to the town. And so with that, the, my deputy, Brian Jalawa, he's been working about 12 to 16 hours trying to cover both Putney and Westminster, but we do have a deficit that we owe the town. So I do have a fully qualified individual. He is certified in New Hampshire. We, we've been waiting for him to be, his certification to be accepted in Vermont for about two months now, but he could essentially hit the ground running once we can hire him. But we're held up by the police academy who has to provide what we call the waiver certification that allows him to work in Vermont.
To me, it's just, it's something wrong with the picture.
I agree. So in 2019, I said, the way we deliver services is flawed. And that, not just my department, I mean Vermont, the way that we layer law enforcement services and really emergency services, police fire EMS, it is hard. We do not take advantage of our resources. We are stretched. We don't have a lot of manpower or.
Well, I'm not sure we can pay if, if we're not getting any service yet that is significant.
So I would say that you are getting the service that you paid for. So last year that there was a deficit in the number of hours versus what you paid and we offered the town one of two options. One was to carry the deficit hours. So let's say you pay for 2,000 hours and we provided 1,800 hours. You carry the 200 hours for, so basically a bank of hours. So that's service that you can still receive and go for. The second option was we issue you a refund and we also did that.
Please, Greg.
When we first started, we, we always had the expenditure, but we also had the revenue coming in from the tickets. And I remember, I think the second, third and fourth year, I remember being pretty proud that we actually hired your service and you came in town and you actually wrote a little bit more tickets than what it cost us to have. It was almost embarrassing. And then now, what I'm concerned is, I don't even see the ticket money much at all, number two. So what I'm more concerned is too, is what are you doing during those hours? Because I don't really, we used to get somebody who would come in, almost every meeting and tell us, you know, somebody was cutting catalyst converters and they were stealing them, we're, we're watching this business or, you know, there's been a lot of traffic on the back Westminster road to picking people up. So that we had a relationship and a report coming from your service of what are you doing? I mean, outside of just now seeing you for the second time, I haven't seen anything from your office of what, what are, you're saying you're giving the service, I don't know what service it is. I don't know if you're picking up people and getting, writing tickets or I don't know if you're surveying or running around and making sure that somebody isn't stealing something. I, I, like I said, it used to be Russ would come and say, yeah, they had problems down by the Eddie's, we used to call it, and they're monitoring it and, but I don't, unless somebody else on the board saw something, I don't, I don't see it no more. And I, that's what's upsetting me the most is I think it can work if we had the relationships correct, where we're actually knowing that because the original sales that we went to the public was we're going to have two, one in Putney, one to Westminster, we're going to share, they can work together. I thought it was a great idea because we get that service so that basically they would know who everybody was limited, you know, walking down the street and knowing that you could talk to them and everything in the first. I would say even when, back when Paul was here, we did have officers coming in to the meetings and talking to us and being there and seeing, because at the meeting like tonight, you get to see what our town's about, who, who are, what's going on, so.
He warned me about using my directional.
Yeah.
And they went to check time.
I, I guess, that was my whole point. Where are we going with this, with I call the relationship? You know, are we going to be able to get to a point where we feel like, man, we're getting a good service? Whether it's half the hours that we used to have, but at least in those half hour, the half amount of time that we originally had and we felt like we were getting our service.
Sure. So we do provide, and Russ has access to what we call our, our Star System. So we do provide that information. So if there's a question as to whether or not we're actually delivering the service, he has access to that. And the benefit for that, that comes with our invoicing process. So A, you can hold me accountable. B, we want you to have information of what is going on. So Russ does have that information. We can certainly, and I own it, we can do better at communicating on a regular basis, say monthly basis or whatever that may be. I'm just picking up period, but we can do better to communicate with COVID and with everything changing, there came a point where we kind of scaled back those things and I think we lost some of our processes that we used to embrace. So I own that and we'll work on improving that.
Jason?
I've only been on this board for nine months, so, well, bear with me, but I don't tend to see people around, sheriffs around like they were years ago, you know? Mostly back to Westminster, I'm not going to lie to you, they seem to really like back to Westminster.
That doesn't mean you need to go there.
Yeah, I didn't make suggestions. I would suggest there's more roads than just that, Antonio.
It's the same spot, isn't it?
Yeah. But I like, like Friday nights, you know, you go to a football game on Friday night, there's two sheriffs there. Okay, I don't necessarily have a problem with that, but who's paying for that? And at the end of the game, when people are like trying to get on under Route 5 and everybody's like this, they're up there at the field kind of still BSing and whatever, which I guess is, I mean, I feel like they should be down directing traffic to get people in and out, which they used to.
Yeah.
And I say years ago, it was a while, but.
Yeah.
You know?
So the, it's actually the school, the Vermont Principals Association has a requirement that high school games have law enforcement presence.
Okay.
So it's the school who's paying for that.
Okay.
I agree with you, they should be directing traffic. I didn't know that they weren't, so we'll address that.
Not that I have seen recently anyway, in the last couple of years.
The whole thing is though, I think, Chair of your school board is that they want them up with the crowd.
They want to BS them, as he says.
They don't want to BS them.
Well, they're chit, they're chit chatting, well, people are trying to get in.
What they're really supposed to be doing is like if it's a heated game or something, there's, there's, you know, there's presence so that people think, okay, well, I, I see what you had a chance, I'm going to admire my manners.
Yeah, no, I get that during the game, but all right, there's two minutes left, all these cars are going to be going out that gate. Let's be on Route 5 and get them.
I don't disagree with you, but I know that's why they.
I have no idea who paid for it. I, that's why.
Well, you're paying too.
Well, yeah. So they don't think counted hours towards, you know.
Yeah, it's not within the scope of this contract. But that said, where have they been? We've seen, we have seen an increase in calls for service that used to be handled by the state police. This draws back to the original problem of we are seeing resources draw down. This isn't critical of the state police, it's that we're all trying to do more with less.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're taking on sexual assault investigations that require interviews of victims and witnesses and whatnot that doesn't have a physical presence here, but it's a known crime that was committed here.
Yeah.
Domestic assaults, same thing. We're seeing the catalytic converters, everybody's seen the catalytic converters and.
Have you seen mine?
Maybe.
I had to go, sorry.
They had your name on it. The, so inevitably what's happening is that my staff is getting pulled off of the road itself to handle these more detective type investigations that we didn't have to handle before. We could say, okay, this is within the scope of what we can do and we do it. And now what we're finding is that we're starting to carry the whole burden of the town. We're, we provide service from 7:00 AM Monday to 10:00 PM Friday night, excluding the midnight hours from 10 to 7. And what we're finding is that Friday, we go off shift, the state police provide the coverage over the weekend, we come back and we have a stack of 5, 10, 15 calls of everything that was non-emergent that came in over the week. Hey, late report of my catalytic converter was stolen, the deputy will pick it up. And so we're, we're finding those burdens are happening. I've talked with Lieutenant French about it and part of it is, hey, we were responding to a domestic in Cavendish and we were over in, in Hartford or, I don't know where they're going, but I mean, they're, they are very busy and they are short-staffed.
Doing more with less is like, everybody's trying to do more with less, so I get that. I understand that.
Sue Harlow. Yeah, I just have a comment. I'm not one of those people who say I never see the sheriff's deputies, which I live along with five, so I see them in the village, not all the time, but just wanted to say they are, they aren't non-existent.
Glad to hear that.
Well, I've seen two of your cars parked together in a, in between. One of them had their wheels in Putney and the other had the wheels in Westminster right where the sign was and never moved, you know, in a trip back and forth that I went down there. This was on the west. You know, when you see something like that, you sort of wonder what's going on here.
Those are opportunities. Most of my staff sees my office at most once a week and at least once a month. We do a lot of decentralized work. Their cars are a mobile office. They have printers in them, computers in them. And so the reason why you might see cars parked side by side is to exchange information, discuss issues with cases and potentially hand off information on other investigations. So. and potentially hand off information on other investigations. So I understand why the perception of that could be like, what are they doing? They're just sitting there chatting. Some of that information exchange is what helps us close investigations.
You know, you know, maybe I, I have one view of it, but even the state's police have been very, very, as far as I'm concerned, they have been useless to anything. We had on our, our road a, somebody who was going back and forth on the road at a hundred miles an hour shooting off a gun, and they sent three, three cars over from the state police, and they stayed at the bottom of the hill. You never went to the bottom of the hill, and they never came up to see what was going on. As far as I'm concerned, I, I just, it blows my mind to think about what was going on there. It was terrible. They got many, many calls, everybody on the road called them. So it's not just the problem with you, but I think they're not doing your job either.
So I would encourage that you speak to Lieutenant French about that. I don't know the circumstances of that, and to my knowledge, we weren't involved in it.
No, you were not.
But certainly I would suggest talking to Lieutenant French.
I had a question, if I may, or.
Mr. Chair, go ahead.
Thank you. Sheriff, I really appreciate everything you do, and I certainly appreciate everything you said. It's, it's a pernicious problem for everybody, the, the lack of resources and the struggle to compete for personnel that are qualified. I will say, being in the center of the mix here, I do see vehicles. I'm not a law enforcement person, but deterrence seems to be a good strategy when there is a presence. It does seem like people are more behaved. I had a question for you, just in your, for the last twelve to sixteen months, in your opinion, have you seen a rise in crime in Westminster? Is there something that we should be concerned about? Is there something you've seen more of?
Catalytic converter thefts.
Okay.
So actually, interestingly, while our, we are seeing an increase in volume of work that we're responsible for statewide and within Wyndham County specifically. I haven't drilled it down to Westminster itself, because I haven't been asked to, but I'm happy to. We have been seeing a downtrend of most crimes. So there are going to be upticks in certain things. I think that there's supporting reasons for that, a lot of it having to do with the federal funding that came in. It helped provide housing in places where, it then localized some of the problems to places where housing was provided. The, not to say that specifically this is the homeless, homeless housing that was provided through state funds over the course of the pandemic. So as we start to see those, those funds either diminish or downtrend, we start to see some of the problems return back to community centers. I don't want to landbase everybody who needed the homeless housing as saying that they're all the bad people. I want to be, be careful not to suggest that that is the case. But there are people who were taking advantage of those accommodations that do cause problems. We have the, I, I guess I'll hold my comments there, other than just broadly, we've seen a downtrend in crime, which is a good thing.
Terrific. Yes, sir. Mr. Ben. To the converter issue, why is it so easy for them to sell that? Wasn't there a time in this, or before, that they had to have signatures from where they got the converters to even be able to resell them to a buyer? What happened to all of that?
So where we have found both pros and cons is on the pro side, we've had precious metal dealers who do not support the selling of this, and so they've actually been rather proactive working with us. On the con side, we have precious metal dealers outside of the state of Vermont who are more than happy to collect and skirt consequences unless it can be proven that they have skirted the consequences. So to that end, being close to New Hampshire, we have several precious metal dealers in New Hampshire who have been purchasing what we believe to be the same converters, and before we can track them down, they're gone. This is not unique to Wyndham County. The.
Sure, Vermont. My sons were stolen at church parking lot. Texas.
We, we have seen this across the state. We've seen it regionally. And to the point where the US Attorney, or then Acting US Attorney, came down to meet with law enforcement agencies. This is probably about eight months ago, maybe longer, maybe shorter, but somewhere around there. And he sat down and said, before you tell me anything that's wrong, we got it. Catalytic converters are getting stolen, and we're already working on moving federal resources to help with this. Because while it's, it's my catalytic converter, your catalytic converter, your catalytic converter. I mean, we can look at that between the one and five hundred dollar range, depending on the vehicle that was taken from, or I guess more commercial vehicles. All these converters are going to a dealer who's then packaging them off and preparing them to sell. And then it starts to become national and international trade, and there's big money in catalytic converters. So the FBI already is, is very interested in this investigation. That started roughly eight months ago when we started sharing our frustration with these cases. There are some, some nuances to the investigations as we conduct them, and the, the burden of, of proof and evidence that we have to provide to say, this is how we know that it's your catalytic converter, because they're not serialized, they're not signed. I mean, it's a piece of metal. We use to, to match cut marks. Well, people are just re-sawing them. So, I mean, that's a, normally I wouldn't share that, except for the fact that everybody knows about it now. So it's like, all right, this is a secret.
We appreciate it.
So we're aware, we're working on bringing resources to, to solve the problem, but it's not ideal.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for the sheriff?
I sell diesel trucks, we don't have that problem, okay?
I got an electric vehicle.
Yeah, yeah, so. But we did have problems with Porsche, as Seb, they actually had these foreign trucks, the little gas ones. And they, each one, there's two on each side, and each one's eleven thousand dollars. They cut them out, so then they hired us to put cages around them. And when they brought it over one night for the next day to put cages over it, they found them in our yard and took them out again. And they were just installed on it. So the insurance company knows, knows what it costs.
Any comment from the folks online or questions for the sheriff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I may, this is Mike Murwicky.
Hi, Mike.
The sheriff brought up a, a couple of things I'd like to address because I've been trying to work with him closely to, to address some of these problems, and we have been meeting regularly. And there was an incident in Westminster several years ago, a, a very concerning incident with a, a fugitive. And since then, I've been trying to meet regularly with Mark. Met with Lieutenant French recently too, to keep up with that, but Mark's a hard guy to keep up with too, because of his schedule along with that. You know, he's also maintaining his National Guard commitment, so this is one busy guy here. But I'm mentioning that because I think he's working hard for us, and when it comes to the, the cost in regards to his pension, this is, this is a big thing. It's an, in very unusual jump in costs, and it's something that there's no other way for him to address it right now, except to pass it along. But this is something the legislature is gonna look at. Pensions are gonna be a big issue. I didn't mention that. It's, it's something we need to look at, but I just wanted to let you know that we are gonna look at that, and, and I have been working with Mark to, to keep on top of this and some of these other things. And I, I wanna thank him for, for his service and trying to, like a lot of businesses, he's trying to pull things together with, with, with fewer staff, and we, we are trying to work together and, and make sure he gets the, the resources he needs. So this is another issue where, working with the select board, working with the sheriff, we're, we're glad to, to lend a hand where we can. So please feel free to look at us as a resource there.
Anything you can do, Mike, believe me, we, we, we appreciate it. And a selfish note for me too, as a citizen. I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Everything you do. Tom Adger.
I, I, I just, not to shoot you in the foot, but I, I've gotta ask in, in a public forum, how are you going to get caught up? We're, we're behind a lot.
Yes, so the, the intention is to do one of two things, and again, present the same question. One is, is would you like a refund? Full, partial, or not at all? So I think that that is an opportunity for discussion in the future. I prefer that we wait till the end of December, so the end of the second quarter to have that discussion, just because it works well with, with this budget. The second part is that what I'd like to do is provide extended shifts instead of an eight-hour shift. Provide a ten or twelve-hour shift on a regular basis to help catch up.
We carried, just, just a heads up, we carried over hours from last year to, to help out. We knew that there was a situation with staff and et cetera. So to help out, we carried it over. At this point, I, and we had talked that he was hoping to get caught up by now. And so it's just been prolonged. And my, my, my feeling is, is, is though the monetary does hurt, I'm sure, it does eliminate the staff problem that you do have still, and we're, we are trying to work through it, but you haven't got there yet. So probably I will recommend taking the monetary, but not now. Now, like you said, after December, I will be coming back to you and asking you to, to approve taking the, the monthly check and, and cutting it in half usually. It's right around half of that. And that eliminates that, that huge issue of, of having manpower, having a, I want an hour of officer while he's on his way route. He stops for an hour and we get an hour's worth of service. That, that's a work for anybody. It, it's not, it's not productive for anybody. So that would be my recommendation, and I, I'm just concerned that we're not, we're not seeing the end of the tunnel, we're not getting caught up. And I don't want to put you in a pinch at the end of the year again, like we did last year. So that would be my concern, and I
Yeah.
I do really appreciate the service, that's for sure.
I, I want to be clear, I don't want to have your money if I don't earn it. I mean, maybe it's a personal ethic, maybe it's just what we expect of each other. I mean, I don't want your money if we don't earn it. So I don't have an issue giving a refund. The reason why, we've played with our, our funding mechanism, and there's, I'll talk about two. Back about ten or fifteen years ago, we charged an hourly rate. And that hourly rate was billed based on what we delivered that month. So if we provided a hundred hours this month, we'd bill you a hundred times our rate. And then next month, we provide two hundred hours, and then it's that. The problem we run into is that, like the town, we have regular costs that do not follow a monthly rate or the worked rate. They follow, hey, every quarter, or once a year, or twice a year, or whatever those, those frequencies are. So we moved to this different model, which is that we take the amount of the contract divided across all twelve months, and that basically allows us to, with the exception of March, say, generally speaking, it touches all the, the checkboxes and covers our cost when we're fully staffed. The reality is, is that when we're not fully staffed, then we're taking in money that we haven't earned, and then we are working to catch up. So I personally don't like either model. I'm trying to work on a third model that is a bit too early for prime time to discuss right now. But a third model in which we say, this is a way that's fair to the town, fair to my department, but then we don't have to have these conversations. Rather, we're just happy and copious. So that's one of the projects I've been working on, but that's currently sitting on the wall while we do budget season. It'll be ready for next fiscal year.
Please, Melli.
Mark, what, what do you, okay, so you've been doing this and not getting the hours in that we're contracted to. Do we need those extra hours? So what I, what I, what I'm hearing is, is that primary's down a little bit other than the redneck some of our catalytic converters. So if you're giving that extra time into us, okay, we're gonna pick on the back Westminster road for a minute. Can you tell where I live? But are we just doing two more hours of giving somebody a speeding ticket because they, you know, want to get home? Or are we, or do we need that business, you know, is there, are there businesses and places in our town that, that really need, deserve, whatever people's wording is, of the protection? I mean, my feeling of, of you is, you know, you're out there protecting me. And so, you know, out on the street, all you hear is, you know, Wyndham County Sheriff, there they are, they're looking for a speeding ticket. That's not fair to you, but that's the vision of most people. Maybe these guys don't want to hear that, but that's the vision of, you know, common town people. How much, how much do we really need for the town?
I can dive into a philosophical answer to that. I'm gonna say it briefly. My personal opinion is that all the towns in Wyndham County need twenty-four hour policing. That said, not every town needs its own twenty-four hour policing. And really what I'm building off of is about fifty to seventy years' worth of studies by the legislature, by the Department of Public Safety, numerous other think tanks and groups who've all come to the same conclusion that we need to regionalize services and help take advantage. Now, we've talked about this with highway departments, fire departments, whatnot. Does everybody need a grader? They're an expensive machine. Does everybody need a grader? Now, the town of Vernon, they have dirt roads, but it's only like three. Could they borrow a grader from, say, Guilford, who has mostly dirt roads? And so there are these efficiencies that at the regional scale that we can develop and take advantage of. So does Westminster need these services? I think so. The.
I don't disagree that they need them by any means. I'm asking, like, you're talking about changing your time to make up this time from eight hours a day to ten hours a day. You know, you know, do we, so we're contracted for so many hours a year. Do we need all those hours? I totally, I totally agree that we need twenty-four hour. But, you know, I also feel like if you're in Putney, and I call up and get a problem, that you're in Putney, and because that's kind of like, I think about mutual aid, you know, I think about, that's why we have, you know, things like that set up is.
Yeah, and that's actually how we've set up the Putney and Westminster contracts, is to have that level of mutual aid. Because before then, Dumerson is an example. I'd provide eighteen hours of service to Dumerson each month. So a majority of the time, Dumerson will get the state police, and I mean, sometimes we have been in Dumerson and the state police respond because they never told us that, hey, the call's in Dumerson. So we see a cruiser go by saying, what's going on? And, well, it was a busy day in the dispatch center, and the memo didn't get passed, and, and so it happened. Now, we're, we do cross minor radios, but sometimes they talk on each other, so these things do happen. But what I would like to see happen as we worked, worked these hours, is to be able to do two things. One is the reactive side, which we already know is taxing, but then the proactive side, which is the part that we haven't really been able to do, which comes back to the conversations of, we're not seeing you. Really, it's proactive work that does bring it about, and people can say, hey, we're sitting here to write speeding tickets. And I mean, I've spoken to this board before to say, well, there's a benefit there. It should not be the, the sole financing mechanism. Are there ways that we can finance this where the town doesn't have to carry the full load? Those are some of the conversations that I've had with Mike, as well as Jeanette White, to say, we are, we're wasting money as a state. We have a piecemeal patchwork law enforcement service, and these studies support what I'm saying. But we're paying for it, so why? So my philosophy, my vision, it doesn't quite work with fee-for-service, which is why I'm trying to work on the third funding mechanism. But to the point, the short-term problem, we'd like to, to make whole on what we said we promised the town. And we fully understand that if the town, the board, and discussion with the town manager, that there's a decision to pull money back from our current contract, I understand that. It actually, as Russ said, it alleviates a burden for me, because I'm putting people on overtime. Our rates aren't designed for overtime, so it costs me money to do it, but I'm trying to make whole on my promise, so.
But, you know, let me just bring this up. An hour is an hour. So if we carry an hour of the old contract, instead of going into the new, if we cash in, we're now gonna take that money and buy this, buy less hours because we're gonna pay more per hour.
No, I honor the rate that, that the rate was for the, the town purchase the service has, so.
That's what I'm trying to say. If they just carry the hours over, if you came in and said, so if we contract for less hours, knowing that we're gonna carry hours over from the old one, we're actually financially better because we just paid less for the, on the older contract per hour. That's my point. So. So maybe before we're done, we do our budget, we would just say, hey, let's cut back on what we're going to hire you to do next year, knowing that we're going to have hours to bring over from the last contract. Does that make sense?
To me it does, if it does to Russ, then I think we're good. Um, and I'll honor, uh, while I understand there's thresholds, I'll honor the conversation like, hey, you're targeting a 2,000 hour contract, I'll give you the 2,000 hour rate, even if you're funding for the next fiscal year, 1,500 hours or 18, whatever.
That's what I would like to have the discussion.
Is that, uh, can you guys plot that solution so we can, I know you got a lot to do, but.
This is, I'll plot that solution and present it to you. How's that?
That's really appreciated.
Appreciate it.
Any more comments, um, for our fine sheriff? Anything online? Oh yeah, Chuck.
I'm just curious, um, with your staffing issues, how many students from vocational services, law enforcement, do you acquire or do they come to you, put in for work? Cause as a taxpayer, feels like I'm losing on both ends here. I'm saying for them to be educated, but you can't offer me the service because you don't have help.
Uh, when you say vocational service, uh.
Godborough Vocational, Springfield Vocational.
Like Wyndham Regional Career Center? Yeah, so the, uh, we've been fortunate, uh, we had a partnership with the Wyndham Regional Career Center. We've been fortunate, um, each year we usually get two to four people out of that. And what we've been finding in more recent years is that the classes have a lot of juniors, not seniors, and it's seniors that we're looking for. Uh, so by the time they graduate, they've already found another flavor that has got their interest.
I see, so they don't stick with the law enforcement end of it?
Some do, some don't. There's not a surprise that there's also, um, there's an air in the world, uh, that makes law enforcement not an interesting job. Um, I shouldn't say an interesting, but maybe a, uh, attractive job. Because, uh, I mean, there's, uh, you guys know. I talked with a, a student who previously showed interest and said, it seems like a terrible time to get into. I was like, this is the best time. I mean, you're starting at a time where we're now actually having the conversations we've wanted to have for years. I mean, we're talking about mental health, we were talking about that 15 years ago. I just got a social worker last year. Been asking for it for a while. Keith had been asking for it for a while. This, this isn't new stuff, but now people are listening. Uh, so we have opportunities to actually effectuate change, which to my point, I mean, to the student, we're changing the fun stuff now. Uh, this is the work that we want to do. Uh, so it's from a public perspective, it looks like a tough career, but it's actually a really good time. Uh, and our partnership with the career center has been a positive one. We don't get a lot out of Springfield, um, but certainly if you guys know anybody who's interested, I'm happy to talk to them, they need to be 18 with either, uh, high school diploma or GED. And that's a state law, um, as a minimum, we do have requirements ourselves, but, um, I can start the conversation from that.
Thank you. Any other? Yes, sir.
I might be misinformed or poorly informed and going to slip my own throat a little bit here too. So for example, going down the back Westminster Road, you know, you can just predict it. It's, is he there, is he not there, the brake lights ahead of you, I'll tap as soon as they clear. You can maintain or speed up, whatever. My, my point is, is it possible to create a revolving schedule that's less predictive? Especially when it comes to coverage and property.
Excuse me?
During all hours of day and night. You know, it's, it's well known that the interstate becomes fair game after 6:00 PM at night because of state police coverage until 12 hours later. How do you get past that?
So the, um, there is a revolving schedule. Uh, currently the hard part right now is that what we're finding, uh, is that we show up in Westminster for one hour and then 3911 calls happen in Putney. So we head down to Putney. And then we come back to Westminster and we get another 911 call back to Putney. So there's this, this, uh, inability to be able to schedule for what we don't know is going to happen. And that's not a surprise. The, if we are able to go with what I'm envisioning as an idea, uh, in terms of building back up to, for the hours and extending some of the shifts, what I'll actually do is I'll have two eight hour shifts, uh, staffed by two different people. And then I'll have a third person come in four hours for Westminster, four hours for Putney. And they're going to be able to create some of that revolving presence that we're talking about.
Seems like that might create a distraction maybe to some of these events.
It does, yes.
Any other questions or comments for our fine sheriff? Online? Seeing none, we will take that only into consideration and, uh, we really appreciate you parting the solution in everything you do.
Thanks, Mark.
You're a dynamic guy and we're, we're very lucky to have you.
I, I appreciate you guys taking the time for, uh, for me tonight, uh, and I'll be in touch.
Thank you and have a wonderful, wonderful Thanksgiving.
The same to you.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business, American Rescue Plan, ARPA committee update.
Committee has been working really hard on, uh, getting ideas on paper. We meet again on November 30th at 5:30 at the Institute, uh, which is next Tuesday. And, uh, again, the hard part is, is getting ideas on, on a piece of paper so that the, uh, committee can actually look at them and see if they, they do, uh, have relevance to, to the ARPA plan. So, uh, so a work in progress and it's, it's very good.
Jim Matta.
Jim Matta was sent.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Jim, if you're with us tonight. For those of us on the board, uh, working on that, Jim sent out some comments. If you haven't seen them over the holiday or over the weekend, please take a look at them. They were, they were very stute and well thought out.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Yes. With the ARPA funds, when, let's say you have a project that you're going to, you're going to want to do, what's the process from that for the funds to be able to be?
That's still a work in progress, but, but they're all saying that we should have public hearings. So that once we get a list of, of, um, projects that we all feel are really solid, then having public hearings about them and having, you know, public input. Uh, it's been talked about is having stations in a, in a very large room such as the, uh, Institute and having, um, the ideas put on paper and then have, uh, committees work on them from the public to give us enhanced those, those ideas. There's also an outreach to, to, uh, local businesses and farms, um, because they are eligible.
Right.
The fire department is bringing, uh, um, some, some ideas to, to the table. And they range, they're, they're severely diversified, that's for sure. They're, they're, uh, from digital records for the town clerk to, to Rownt Avenue and the, the fire station's yard, uh, to redo, um, some water lines and the tar and the drainage system. So, and now we've got the Institute and Jim's email, it was really good at, at, uh, getting up, uh, a larger space for our meetings with some acoustics changes and such.
Tonight being evidence of that.
Sure was.
Would you, is it required like a board approval for the?
Then it comes back to you, the, the select board have the last.
Oh.
It comes here to this board for the last approval of spending your money.
And I'll be rotating with.
I was just curious, that's, uh, the process.
Rotating with Jason for the next meeting. Toby, I assume you'll be there.
I, I have a doctor's appointment that goes, I'm out of state, but I guess I can come in.
Okay. In the event, Jason, you'll be attending.
30th?
Yes.
Tuesday night, 5:30.
Okay, terrific. Uh, any more comment on the American Rescue Plan and ARPA, uh, from the public or online? Seeing none, thank you. We'll move on to Hartley Hill Road, private section update, if any.
There is no update other than we had a verbal from Larry that stated that, um, he was not, um, thinking that this was a, um, wise decision on the town's part to join into a, um, a decision that could jeopardize us having that right of way to our, um, access. So he's not in favor of us pushing for the, um, the deed and having, um, Mr. Whitberg, um, press the, the issue. So, um, I've asked it for it in writing multiple times, it's, it's in the process.
Okay.
Get legal counsels down and dirty about that subject.
Okay.
So.
Terrific, thank you very much. Moving on to the new website, moving maintenance update.
Um, yes, Craig asked for, uh, some, um, information on costs. And so we got, uh, talked to several, one was a company and then one is a, um, woman who used to be a web, uh, webmaster at VA. Uh, they both gave me quotes and I got references. So, um, my suggestion is for the, um, update of the website now, the migrating it over. The way higher, um, this one is, is Rakesha Mlebski, I believe. I've got it.
You got to spell it.
Yeah, I will, anyway. And ask her to do the update of the website and the migration, um, to the new site. And then, um, we can discuss, uh, ongoing maintenance in the new budget, I'm assuming, which we've already put. Whether we want to hire to do that or go out, ask for more quotes or what, but.
She's willing.
Um, yeah.
Susan?
Yes.
Has she, has she done other towns before that we can go look at their website?
I'll show you her, um, resume. She was at VA for quite a while and, um.
I didn't know, so she, she had another town or another website that she's done and we can just go look at it and get an idea.
Yeah, she, at this point, she doesn't have to design it. It's already designed by, she just essentially has to move it over so it's our website. And also, uh, the, a lot of the, or some of the information on it, uh, was, uh, current when Ross Lazarak was working on it. So just, that has to be just updated. But the design is all done, um, navigation, et cetera, so.
Do we have a time roughly?
Oh.
Week?
How long it takes?
No, no, no. When do, when do you want to start that process?
I would ask, I, I think as soon as she can get on it, that would be what I would.
Sometime in December.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so I, I think it's going to cost somewhere, she said it would probably take five to six hours to do that work. So that would be about $300 to $400, which is pretty cheap, I think.
It is, yeah.
So that's my suggestion anyway. Um, she came highly recommended by, um, Pauline and by, um, a couple of the people, the references she provided, so.
Okay. Any further comment on that or from the public on the new website moving? Seeing none?
Do you need a motion?
It's within the budget.
It's in the budget.
But you asked your costs and so it's going to be like.
Well, I just thought if you're, if we're going to get down to sign a contract, then we should make a motion, but it's not a contract right now.
Yeah, this is such a do this work and then once we start.
I don't think you need a motion.
Okay. Any other comment? Seeing none, moving on to the collaborative finance processing manuals.
I'm not sure what you needed. I sent you out an email. Um, I thought I was going to be on the agenda to go over financials, so I was a little confused by that, so.
But we appreciate you being here as always and all you're doing. And I do apologize, we had a unique event, which was the special session of Congress, uh, of our congressional leaders and a very long meeting tonight.
Yep, that's fine.
But we appreciate everything you're doing and you're here. If we could table that to our next meeting.
Yep.
Do you want to do the end of the month as you asked?
Yeah.
So not next meeting, but well, wait a minute. They could possibly be missing the December 22nd meeting.
It's really for you guys.
Yes.
What you want to know and what your financials are looking like and what, how you're going to, you know, I really strongly think you need to start thinking about how you're going to be paid for storm expenses. With FEMA potentially going across fiscal years, you've got a $800,000 that you gotta figure out what's gonna, in the long run, fund that. If you don't get all the money from FEMA, hopefully you will. But I mean, those are big financial decisions that I think you gotta look at. You gotta pay that line of credit back soon because it was short-term borrowing. So I think you're going to make some big financial decisions, so it's really up to you what you want as a board.
Less on the agenda, so we could be spending time on it would help, so.
That's not as controversial. Take it easy.
So it's really your call. I mean, I'm here for you to work with you, but those are my thoughts as a finance person. You've got to, you've got to make some major decisions here.
Sure.
A pair at a time, and if it's going to affect your budget in the middle of budget season.
Yeah.
As you plan that out for next year, then.
Given this, given that, given the special meeting to today, um, I, um, I think we will make, we'll work very diligently to make our next meeting on December 8th, a focus of budget, um, uh, to make sure that we catch up on this. And if you could be there to catch up on these matters, um, we can really, uh, we'll dig into it. And I also do recall, not to say it's going to happen, but I do recall that we did call a special meeting, uh, for the board, uh, before the end of the year when we needed that extra time. I think Shell called us in and we got done that last minute stuff. If that's necessary, I hope it won't be with our next two meetings. But again, really appreciate everything you're doing. So let's make December 8th, Mr., um, Town Manager.
And do we know where we're going to stand with the highway fund?
Splitting of the highway fund? Today I was able to talk to Chad for the first time in a month. And, um, he recommends that the splitting is a great idea. But please, he begged you not to do it before the end of this year, starting next fiscal year. It's that it would be very hard on the accounting process to, to, um, to start it in a middle of the year. So his recommendation is.
Would we go to the voters that next, so my own concern, when we present our next budget and it's in our budget report, would it be separated there? And we wouldn't have started until the next July, but would, when we presented to the board, would we, to the voters, would we be presenting what would be this new look of how we would separate it?
You, uh, your, your recommendation was just to keep the budget as the budget, not a separate article for the highway.
Not a separate article, but basically.
But you could show the difference.
That's what I'm saying. It's the report, when we opened the report and we're looking at it, we would actually see that the report look a little different that we're going to the voters with, where the highway was actually separated.
That's what he said is, is for FY '23, yes.
Right, which is going to be printed in.
Which is March, meeting town.
Which means that we would have to have it done for the report by the end of January.
So the budget you're working on right now, you would like to see highway as a separate set of numbers versus your offering.
The only way we can get started, because that's even though we go start to the last week in January, we have to have it printed. We have to have that so we can July start with it.
That would be Russ doing the budget work, so, yeah.
Much more transparent, I think, if they're separated. So that would be him working on your Excel spreadsheets, not me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, again, priority for next meeting will be budget and this issue. So, uh, given the fact that you just spoke to Chad today, um, let's, uh, please cobble together. I know you're busy as much as you can, um, uh, to make sure that we're focused on that like a laser as we dissect the budget at our next meeting.
Yep.
Okay, is everyone on board with the, does that, does that make it sound like a great? Any comments from the public? Okay, great. Moving on to the 729 storm, our FEMA update.
Kind of got bits and pieces throughout this meeting, but it, it went very, very well. Uh, we have a very good representative that is working with us, um, weekly. She will be in the office once a week, um, to actually receive data. She will be working on, um, the, the town's total process at her hotel room in Essex. But it went well. We have all the data, um, that she needed. Um, it's in the order that she wanted it in. And, um, my crunch is before Tuesday, I have to get one of our, um, our, uh, projects, um, on a worksheet. So she has something to go by. And out of the projects, you could have up to 10 roads and a maximum, an optimum maximum of $132,200 was, that was a magic number. And why is because if it goes over that, then, then you turn it into a large project and there's a bunch more hoops that you'd have to jump through. So it's to the benefit of the town to, to keep them under that threshold and group as many towns as you can, up to 10 in these groups. Well, we did that, we did that, uh, um, this past week and, uh, we've got 10 of them. And we have two projects that are uncompleted in their minds, which is Pickery and School Street. So those have been, uh, lopped together. Excuse me, Henwood, not Pickery, sorry. Henwood and School. And the rest have been grouped together, trying to keep them under the 132, which is, was a task, but we, we did that. And so we're, we're on the mend, we're on the move, so.
She seemed really good at the meeting.
She was very good and very thorough.
And willing to help, willing to like make it work.
Yeah, she wants to do it once and no hiccups. Once it leaves our hands, then it goes through another whole process of review. She doesn't want any hiccups in that review.
So correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but we'll be seeing payments as this process transpires. And you finish these projects as you go, you will be seeing payments throughout this whole process. It won't be the very end, two years from now, they'll just give one check.
Exactly.
You'll be getting paid as we go, is that correct?
You're exactly correct. So once she finishes a project, then it goes into the review sort. Once they are done, we could get a check. We, we could see realistically, before this end of this fiscal year, we could get our first check. Will it be a bunch of the project? Probably not. It would probably be one or two, so in the $150,000 range, which would be awesome. And then as they get finished, they, the checks would come in. But yes, you're exactly right, they're not bunched together, they're one project, one payment.
And Mike Crarken thinking that she's trying to streamline this whole process to get it done as fast as she can?
Absolutely, yeah. She's working very hard for us and with us to streamline this, like as you just said, to, to get it done and done right and, and proceed. We are ahead of the game by towns that she has, and that's why she's jumping on our, on our shelves right now and, and so she can get those done relatively quickly. And, yeah, it was a, it was a good meeting.
Okay.
Congratulations Chuck, you were correct on two things. I was prepared to, to correct you, but you were absolutely right.
Any more comment on the?
Can I ask Russ a question?
Hey, so speaking?
Michelle?
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, I heard the word Henwood Hill Road, and that's right where I live. And I'm just wondering if Russ has a little bit of a time estimate on when that might be happening? If the FEMA money comes in, is it possible the road will be repaired before the winter or what are we thinking?
FEMA money doesn't come in until the project is completed. So we did put that out to bid. We do have a contractor that's slated to have it done by January 1st. And it will be open at that point.
That is great news. I can now get my mail without driving nine miles or walking one. Thank you.
We really appreciate your patience and your generosity too with the town. Any other comments? Okay, five-year capital plan. We really don't, but thanks to one of our taxpayers, we have an outline. So. Yes.
So when I first started talking about this maybe a year ago, my idea was that we would have all the projects and estimated costs and then we prioritize them. And I started thinking about it, how difficult it is to estimate the cost because they change from month to month. So I think at some point, what I'd rather do is prioritize, then get the costs, and then decide how we're going to pay for it. Because if we just take all these projects and figure out what the cost is going to be, it'll all be moved within weeks.
But isn't that part of a budgeting process? That's what you do in a budget, is you have to have an idea of what something's going to cost, whether it's accurate or not, and how you're going to fund it.
Right, but this isn't really a budget.
Right, so that's my, well, you have to work it into your budget though to, to reach these goals, but I don't see that in your budget anywhere. Where is this plan and no equipment for the highway on here? Where is that money in your budget? So that you're not, five years from now, you may need another dump truck and you're saving money so that you're not borrowing all of that to buy that truck. You need to work that into your budget, and that's where I don't see that happening.
So what you're saying is, for instance, in the town garage, we have several items. So, but we're not going to do four of those in the next budget, or probably the next budget after that, except that we do have a garage reserve fund.
But you're not budgeting to save for that project. Why are you budgeting that project three years? Why not start saving $5,000 this year and the reserves $5,000 next year, so that when you come to this?
I, well, we have been, we've put money in the garage fund. We'll probably put more this year, we haven't come to the end of the budget.
This is not equipment, this is capital, the buildings we own. And you gotta take number three completely out of there because it's all going to be either nothing or, you know, but you're right. The garage and the post office and the town hall, they're buildings we have to maintain. And we're looking at, well, we do put money in to maintain them every year. The question is, as things change, do we actually have to now change and put an addition onto the garage? Well.
But maintenance is a capital improvement. Capital to replace capital.
Right.
Should be saved on a regular basis, not maintenance.
But I don't see one here. I mean, I, we haven't.
Why aren't we budgeting equipment though? That's my question as a taxpayer.
We do, we have a capital reserve for equipment, equipment fund.
But you budget and then you buy that year. That's not, that's not a, that's budgeting to buy the equipment, that's not budgeting to pay. So right now, do you know what equipment you need in two years?
We have a schedule for all the equipment.
So why aren't we putting enough money away so that when we gotta buy that next piece of equipment, we have a down big time pay? We.
I don't know, this whole thing makes my head hurt, so.
Well, I mean, we're, we're not, I'm assuming we're not going to take all the money we need for all these five garage projects, which would be what, million?
Millions.
And put it in our next year's budget. We're going to take, I'm hoping, $60,000 or more from the garage fund to achieve the, replacing the fuel truck, which is a priority, I'm assuming for.
So then that depletes your garage fund?
Then we'll put more into the garage fund in the budget or from our surplus, which is a whole other discussion.
The philosophy was that what was, was created, they did not want the, the tax rate to bounce according to capital need. So what they've been planning to do is do it as we can afford it, period. Not to budget, not to, to take the taxpayers and say, just in case the roof leaks, we're going to throw $5,000 at.
But you'd rather spike the tax rate in two years when you need to add $150,000 into that budget. So that's what you're not.
That's the philosophy is that, that we would not ever do that unless it was an emergency. You have a earthquake and the building has some serious injury to it, so.
But budgeting to me is saving a little bit each year so that you're not borrowing everything in a given year.
That's what they do with the surplus.
Yes, we do that already.
Well, what we did is we used to when I first got on, and I don't know why we got talked into doing an article for the equipment. We shouldn't have done that because we should have just put, let's just say, $200,000 a year, not asked for an article. It's just for the, for there. And then we wouldn't be in the bind up, because right now, when we go to the voters, we say we need 150 for a truck, okay? At that point, we locked ourselves into only buying a truck and only spending $150,000. Whereas we used to have it as just a line item, I mean, it's not an article, that we had this much in reserve, we put, keep putting 200. We would reach out and buy a pickup one year, next year we wouldn't buy, so we only used 100 of it. Next year we spent 150 on a truck, we spent, you know what I mean? I, I don't know why, we should need, we need to think about going back to that, my mini, because when we do an article, we tell the voters exactly what we're buying and then we're locked into it. And what's going to happen if all of a sudden, like, the year's coming up, you can't get a truck next year? Well, now you can't use the money you asked for the voters because you asked for a truck and the truck wasn't available. So you don't have the ability to go buy an excavator. So I think that we just made a mistake, I think we did it like seven, eight, 10 years ago, where somebody came along and said, you should ask for the article. And we went to an article instead of just being a line item. Because what you're saying is a line item, put 200,000 in it and then.
Not even that every year, could you just show me? Because if you're saying you have that, where, where is that? Because I just don't understand it, I guess, in here, that you're saying you ask every year for reserves for the highway. Just reserves for the highway, you're asking, so when I look at your budget, I see an article or is it a special article? You don't put it in your regular budget? You're asking us at town meeting for $5,000 or $10,000 to be put in the highway equipment fund for future purchases?
$145,000.
Okay, so you bought $145,000, then you spent it that next year, right?
It's a special article, it's a separate article.
Okay.
And that's what Craig just said, somehow, years ago, and I can remember, I, I'd never remember it not being an article at town meeting.
It was when I first got on, but I've been here, this is heading towards my 20th year.
I just, it's been a ton of time. And every year, taxpayers have the right to know that, yes, we're going to, we're asking for X amount of dollars for the equipment fund this year.
Right, and so then that builds up, or you spent it right away. That's what I'm asking, so.
Sometimes it's a small item that we buy.
So $145,000, so I should be able to see over the course of the budgets for the last five years, $145,000 has gone in that reserve until you're ready to buy a truck. You don't put it into the reserves and then buy the equipment as soon as the budget changes.
Are fleets large enough where we have to replace something every year? So hence why I'm sure that the conversation was that they pulled it out of the budget, is so that we could have this conversation about, what are you purchasing this year? So they have this special article, it's, it's, it's now at $145,000 because machines have gone up. It was at 130 for multiple years, like as in December 8th. It's still not enough, but it's.
No, it's gone up. And the other thing is, is that what's caught, what's really hurt it is the little one tons you did, because that was the years we had a break when all of a sudden we still had 130 in there, but we only bought a one ton that year. Well, now those things are up to 80,000 or 90,000. So now all of a sudden, we, we don't get to break where we used to skip, we do skip a year once in a while. And then, in 100%, we weren't building up for the road grader, we weren't building up for the loader. It was just, basically, we're going to spend that much on, on vehicles that were short-term. They're, they're six, seven, eight years, where the road grader could be 25 years or 15 years. But, so, yeah, I think.
We take trucks out of it. Where, like, where is the money to maintain this building in the, in your budget? Reserves to maintain this town hall? Yes, we did a lot of renovations, we approved a town meeting. Where is the savings starting to replace this roof if it goes again? Where is those reserves, little bit at a time, built up so that when a major project happens or is needed here, we can take it out of that reserve versus taking it all in one budget year, hitting the taxpayers with $50,000 versus five or 10, which is a very little amount on your tax rate versus 50 when the project happens? That's, is there that, and I just don't see it?
So have you looked at page eight on the budget?
That's where I'm asking, so, okay.
But, so she's bringing up a point. For example, when we do maintenance and we just put in, I saw the garage, we have 12,000. If we don't spend the 12,000, it goes back to the voters. We don't put it in a fund where it keeps growing. If we don't spend it, it goes away. That is different, and we do, we put money in it every year, the paint, the building, to do this, but that's, but it disappears once the year's done.
But we now have $60,000 in our garage fund.
Because we, we designated a garage fund, that's what she's asking for.
But like town hall, this building is going to need repairs in the future. So like you said, if it's a maintenance item, it's in your regular budget. When, if you don't spend it in a particular year, it goes into your fund balance.
Right, right.
It doesn't go to a savings, a reserve that is specifically to do the repairs on this building. Then you come to us as taxpayers and say, we need $200,000 to fix this building all in one year, where we could have been building up to reduce that cost to us all in one year.
That would be the capital improvement fund, which we have, you know, paid down because of the town hall. We have not put more money into it yet because we've just, we haven't actually come to it in the budget. So we have a bridge fund, that's a bridge reserve fund. We build that up because we have, we have, and we're going to have to do more, you understand that, right?
I totally understand all of that.
You got, you figured that out, okay? And at some point, when we come to it, we're going to have to talk about the garage fund. Are we going to put it here? Are we going to have a special article?
And what she's saying, we knew down the road that we had 121 coming up 15 years ago. And we were saying, we gotta start putting money in for the bridge. We know that we're going to have to do something with the town garage, but we, as a board, have not gotten to a point where we even hired anybody to come in and say, we're going to put an addition, we're going to put a roof on, we're going to do what? At that point, once we do, I think then we, I'm right with you that, hey, it came back, we can get by another four or five years. But in four or five years, we need to put a complete addition on it, we need to start thinking about it. We just haven't got to that point of coming to an actual agreement of what we're going to do with the town garage.
So you don't have an actual fund that's capital reserve? Like the fire department has a set, I think it's $40,000 every year, that goes into our capital reserve, which is a blanket account so that we can use it for a fire truck, we can use it for maintenance of the building, we can use it for whatever. But that money keeps building money, it's not for a specific.
We did in our eyes because we went to an article and there were two articles, every year for the bridge and for the, and for the trucks or for the equipment, that we made articles out of them. And then like I said, maybe in hindsight, it wasn't even good to do the bridge. We should have just had a fund in there that was designated to be bridge repairs and we just put it as, and not make an article. And then the reason is, is that, that point of all of a sudden, we need to take the money to repair a big covert, a box covert, that's really not a bridge. But we could probably move the money over to use it because it's in the same category. Right, but I don't know if you could, if we did an article, we told the voters that in an article, we were going to put it in the bridge fund, we gotta have it for the bridge fund. You know, we can't, we can't move it. But if we did it as a line item, just in a line item, that this is going into the bridge maintenance fee, we would have a little more of a, of control of what we could use the money for.
So I, I think the answer to the question is yes, but the problem is, there isn't enough being put away. So there's not like huge savings of it. They're attempting to, but the problem is the money goes in and comes back out. It's like you saving money for your power bill and you're saving $150 a month to pay your power and it is $150 a month. You don't have any extra stay in there, it's gone. Same with what we're saving for trucks and equipment in the bridge fund. And the other problem is, last year we had over $100,000 in surplus. And there was people here at this meeting that pitched a fit and made them give it back to the taxpayers, which amounted to about 10 cents in my taxes. My taxes went up, so it didn't amount to anything. But that $100,000 in the bridge fund or the truck fund or the equipment fund or the town hall fund or what have you, or the emergency fund would have been huge.
But it needs to be designated to that though, you're not just sitting in your fund balance.
What I'm saying, they, they tried.
Yeah.
They tried and they got crucified for that, so, I mean.
Well, it's because we, we weren't, we didn't have our stuff together because we couldn't explain to the voters what we're going to do with it. If we were more prepared, if we were more prepared, we could have said, we need the 100,000 for this. We're all sitting there going like, oh, what are we going to do with 100,000, might as well get it back.
So I guess this year, what you said was.
Yeah, but that would be a, that's a discussion too. I mean, in that year that we went, had a special meeting about the surplus, we took the amount on June 30th that the auditor said we had, that was our surplus, yes. That was the amount that we used to, and we split that up and said, you know, this is what we're going to do with it, send 100,000 back. So like, question this year, is that, are we going to take the $135,000 or whatever it was that Chad told us at the end of last year? And then how are we going to, you know, are we going to have special articles or what? That'll be a discussion.
That'll be a discussion on the 8th. We will need to move forward. We will go with the 8th as a, hopefully we'll be able to, as a financial meeting and really limit our discussion. And hopefully Darlene, you can bring your fine observations with you and be there. I know you, we're taking an awful lot of your time, but if you can join us, we can now work hard. And I would ask everybody to always do, do their homework for the 8th and we'll get ahead of that. Let's move, yes?
I apologize for getting upset with you. It's beyond, this, this stuff is like, it's like reading Greek to me, honesty, really. And I'm trying to learn it, but I get frustrated with it and.
And I'll, I'll only say it's just, no, I did not, at all, not at all. I figured it was a discussion and I, if you look at it from your personal budget, think of. If you look at it from your personal budget, think of it that way, your personal budget, ask your wife.
You don't want me.
And we will tackle this at our next meeting. So, thank you again. Thank you for all the excellent commentary. Okay, so we're going to table.
Make sure we put on there, we should have that discussion, which is on page eight where Russ has already got articles not yet approved. That's what we need to discuss.
Well, we're going to discuss the whole thing.
Right.
So, that's why we're tabling the fiscal budget, given, again, the special meeting format tonight, which we weren't expecting. And we will concentrate on that and Russ and I will work on the agenda to make sure it's.
So, you're tabling?
Yeah, we got to table that as well. We're going to tackle that on the, tackle that on the eighth.
And actually, too, when we go to, at the end, we always have that big discussion where we're presenting this whole budget, but it never has the articles in it because we have to put those in at the end. And we're almost deceiving the people because basically, we know we're going to have to add that to it. So, if we just simply just said, these are no longer articles, they're in the budget, it'd be easier to actually understand the budget.
We should just do that, yeah.
And that's what we will try and accomplish, fellow taxpayers, with our last month of business. So, we'll work hard to do that. The state of Vermont, AC DS has been tabled as well. We'll now move on to new business, mailing a ballot to every taxpayer, yes or no?
We're kind of under the gun. The clerks were given an elective for select boards to mail out the option to mail out ballots to each and every taxpayer. Their recommendation is no, please don't do that. The budget does not support it, but it also would be a lot of wasted work on their part, sending all these out, buying more envelopes, buying more ballots when their input would be, the bottom line would be just under thirty-six thousand, thirty-six hundred dollars. And they have in the budget right this second, eight hundred dollars or something.
Certainly.
So, they're asking, please don't, but they were given, they were told by the state that you should have the final say in whether you think this is a valid point.
So, the normal way that it's always been is that you request a ballot.
That's correct. And that's what they're asking for. They have eight hundred and sixty-two dollars left in their budget.
You need a motion?
Thirty-six hundred. No, if you're not going to, to change it, then I, I don't.
Okay.
The discussion is.
Terrific.
Been had and in the minutes that.
Wonderful.
We're going to proceed as.
You're going to proceed as requesting that if you want.
Nobody made a motion to change it, so we stay the same.
Moving on to town mass for public, that has also been included. Rules for procedure for our municipal boards, VLCT. We will table that also to the eighth and I'll make sure, I will take that on personally as something we definitely discuss and decide upon. So, I'll put that on.
This is not a critical.
No, it's not.
You got to have done before January type thing where you have a lot that has to be done before January? So, this can wait until after the first of the year.
But it's also reaffirmation. There's nothing really overtly controversial in there whatsoever. So, I think it's something we can probably get done. I'll make that my point. Okay, moving on to the bidding process discussion. Again.
Yep.
Go ahead.
All this paper isn't really all that necessary. All I'm asking for is to have a pre-bid meeting with contractors for whatever project it is. It's not a, it's just a procedure. That's all, that's all I'm. I don't even think, I mean, I don't even know if we need a motion of any kind. It's just a request, I guess.
Will you settle for a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting?
I think it would.
What happens is you lose, you lose.
I think you'll get serious bidders that way. If it's mandatory, then I don't know.
One or two. You'll never get a full slate of, well, people even dipping their toe in the water to see if it's something they can handle.
They don't know unless they come and.
That's true. Most of them come singly if they're really that interested.
Correct, but what I'm saying is that those three, say you've got four people, they're going to get four different statements from, do you follow me? They're not all going to get the same information. And I'm not saying it's, it's done purposely. I'm just saying, you know how it is. So-and-so said and so-and-so said, well, it gets, and you make one trip instead of four. That's all, that's all I'm saying. It doesn't have to be anything official. It's just a request. That's all.
Look, may I?
Yeah.
I think I was going to bring this up, but not this evening. We have to review and we should review with best practices through VLCT. Our bidding processes, our manuals, our purchasing policies, they need to be reviewed periodically and we are long overdue for that. So, I would think just having that review in this discussion is a healthy thing. And we can certainly move that to our first or second meeting of the new year to have a discussion because we're talking about policy, not budget. And.
Your procurement policy is only two or three years old.
Right, I think we went over that.
I mean, it's not old.
No, and no one said.
The procedure, I have no problem with adding the pre-bid meeting. You just got to go into it with eyes wide open. You will lose some.
But if we have, again, if we have a meeting where we're having a discussion and we line up all of our stuff and we simply go over it, chances are, probably, most of them will stay static. But it's important that we be able to demonstrate to the taxpayers and everyone else, we did do a review, that it was done by the board. And like I said, like, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Okay, but there's nothing wrong with just having that review and putting it on the agenda for a night. So, I'd be more, if you're willing, to just table this to.
I'm not any yank on, no, not whatsoever.
No, but I think we got to look at the whole thing. We just had some major changes, you know, two, three years ago. We could find three bidders that would do the truck, for example, or something. As of the last week, two more just moved out. There is only one, one manufacturer left that will even build equipment. And there's only one truck manufacturer. They all got bought. We all got bought by one. International got bought by one. And just, so now there's no competition. So, now what are we doing? How do we proceed with, we need to purchase something? And it's just not even, even in the excavator cap business, there's, they're down to just a few left. Everybody became superstores and you're down to, you can't call and get them. So, now we have to look at what's the best honest practice way we're going to have to proceed of how we're going to purchase big purchases.
And we used to put out things to bid even since I've been here.
Yeah.
You used to get ten people interested. You'd end up with five or six bids. Now, you're lucky to get two, maybe three.
I used to constantly go to bid openers all the time, constantly bid. I've just been into this last town to bid and I just told them, this is a while ago, you bid, you're not getting the truck. Nobody's going to come to the bid open. We don't need the business. You don't need to bid it. If you want a truck, you better let somebody know ahead of time.
That's what I'm worried about, mandatory bid.
I'm not talking about bid trucks and equipment. I'm talking about.
He's talking payment. But it's all part of the same.
No question. And we've got economic shifts. We don't know where, again, inflation and. But we went through, we went all through in the thing of the storm where everyone did a great job. But again, we were, we were pulled apart for, again, resources, contractors, time, everything. So, I think it's just very healthy for us to review our policies. I'm sure it will be painless, go fast, but at least we can say to the taxpayers, before town hall, yeah, we went through all of our policies. These are the things we came up with. And I think spending some time on that, unless my colleagues disagree, would be a pretty good idea.
Yep. Things have changed fast, right?
They have. Okay. Any comments from the public on that? Great. Okay, so executive session that also has been tabled, managers report.
I have nothing to report this evening. I pretty much put all the items on the agenda under business, so.
I think you didn't get a deer because you would be reporting that.
Boards and commissions.
That's a tough subject, okay Craig?
Boards and commissions.
I have nothing to report in that.
Okay, real quickly, other business now, forgive me. When we opened the meeting, we talked about October twenty-seventh minutes and I have the November tenth minutes in my hand. Millie?
Yeah.
So, my question is, I don't think I asked for approval on the Wednesday, November tenth minute. I think I asked for approval on the October twenty-seventh minute, so I just want to correct that if that was the case.
But the motion I made was the November tenth.
Was it indeed?
It was.
Thank you for being here.
October twenty-seventh after that and I thought, hmm, should I stop it?
Thank you, so then I stand corrected. Okay, any other comments? Any other business?
This show, nobody's listening to you.
Okay. That's par for the course. That's par for the course. Move for the, move to adjourn.
That told me do it. That told me do it.
That told you?
I moved to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye. Good recovery.
Thank you all so much and have a wonderful Thanksgiving.